I think we're rolling. It doesn't look, oh yeah, okay. Good evening, everybody. It is a joy to have a full house this evening. Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Meeting of April 4th, 2022. This is our regular meeting. And at this time, Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Acosta?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Here.
Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Bradford, here. President Burton?
Here. And we have a quorum. Mrs. Bradford, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome all of you here this evening. As I said, it is, it is a joy to have a full house because we have so very many things to celebrate in our school district this evening. At this time, we do want to start off with something very important. As most folks know, by this time, we, as a school district, have incurred two very significant losses of our staff members unexpectedly over our spring break and unrelated to one another. We lost Mrs. Sheri Lynn Naden, a second grade teacher at Rosedale, and Melody Proventure, who is a retiree of Livonia Public Schools, who has come back as a long-term sub at Johnson and our music department. These were not expected and are devastating to our Livonia Public Schools community. In addition, within this last month, but since our last board meeting, we lost one of our students. Sorry. Silas Kurtz, one of our Riley students, lost his very long-term battle with cancer. Sorry. Didn't anticipate that.
Do you have any help?
I'm good, thank you. And we are obviously sincerely heartbroken. This does not happen commonly in our community, and it has impacted many, many people. My sincere thanks also goes out to our Student Services Department that has helped immensely to all of the students and staff who have been impacted, in addition to many of their family members. But at this time, I would like to ask for a moment of silence. We will recognize these in a little bit more detail later in our meeting, but we just feel it is so important that we need to start with a recognition of these very important individuals to our LPS family. Thank you very much for your support of one another. If you do know some of the staff and students who are directly impacted, I do encourage you to reach out and to support one another through these really untimely losses. We are blessed, as we said, in so many ways in this school district. One of them is by being such a large and deep organization that we have so many services. And as I said, we do really thank our, our Student Services team. So many times of, of crisis, whether it be very individual or very large, as in widespread as in this case, our Student Services teams comes in and they really provide so many resources for, for our LPS family. If you have need of someone to talk to, I please, I encourage you to reach out to these folks. They are absolutely wonderful, and we thank them as a Board of Education. We have many, many things to recognize that are celebratory this evening. Probably more this, more in one meeting than I can remember in a long, long time. And it is, it is our joy to get started with, with some of these recognitions. We have many state honors of athletes and exciting personnel recommendations that are going to be voted upon this evening that just bring us so much joy to celebrate with all of our students. At this time, we're going to start into those. A couple of just quick housekeeping notes. Tonight's meeting is a regular meeting, or as some refer to as a voting meeting. What we will do is we will have several of our, what we call communications items. And these are a lot of our recognition type items. Following item three, three F on your agenda, we will have a brief break in our meeting so that those present can congratulate our many, many honorees who are here this evening. So if you would like to hang around for, for that time, there will be a natural break in our meeting so that everyone can congratulate firsthand those, those of you who have gone so far and above and excelled in your, in your areas. After that time period, we'll be voting on a number of items. There will not be the level of discussion on a lot of these items before we do vote on them. The reason for that is not because we take these items lightly, because we don't. There, there are significant decisions to be made, but rather that they have been discussed at at least two prior meetings, at our study sessions or at our Committee of the Whole meetings, or both, likely both. If you're interested in the deep discussions and a lot of the, the background information on a lot of the items on which the Board votes, I encourage you to tune into our Committee of the Whole meetings. You can attend them in person, or you can watch them live, or you can watch them on, off of our website. If you're interested in those, you can find them under the Board tab. If you go to livoniapublicschools.org and hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to Board Meeting Information, and you could find prior, prior meetings of the Board of Education. So you can find all the information that you'd like there. So again, we will not have the level of discussion that you might expect from a Board of Education on these items, but please know that we do take them very seriously, and we have discussed them at length on at least two other occasions. One very, very important character trait that we teach in Livonia Public Schools is respect. It's taught, as, as all of our students who are in the front section know, it's taught from kindergarten all the way up through our senior year. This Board of Education takes that, that very, very seriously. You have our commitment that we will treat one another and everyone who is present in our meeting this evening with respect. We ask that everyone treat each other with respect also at our meetings. We may agree, we may disagree on items, and that's okay, and that's healthy. But we, it is very important that we treat one another with respect on whatever we stand on, on various issues that may be coming before the Board. And you have our commitment that that starts right here at this Board table. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Jenkins. The agenda item that we are on is item 3A, Recognition of MHSAA Division One State Champions Franklin High School Varsity Pom-Pom Team. And may I have a motion first?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools, School District adopt the attached resolution recognizing Franklin High School Pom-Pom for the achieve, for achieving the Mid-American Pom-Pom Division One State Championship Title.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. And I'll turn it over to Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you. Good evening, President Burton, members of the Board, Superintendent Oquist. No pun intended, let's kick it off with the Pom recognition. Tonight, it is my pleasure to welcome and congratulate the members of the Franklin High School Pom-Pom Team for not only winning the Mid-American Pom Division One State Championship, but also for making history as the first Pom Team at Franklin to capture this title. As you can see, we have a full house this evening. And I would like to, at, at this time, I'd like to ask Franklin Pom-Pom Coach Madison Ruffing. Actually, there are two, I was not really aware of that. Also, Brooke argued to join me at the podium, please. As well as Board Trustee Liz Jarvis, who will read the special resolution that we have prepared for the Franklin Pom Team.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Whereas the trustees of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education are desirous of publicly recognizing the outstanding accomplishments of students who distinguish themselves during the pursuit of their public education in the school district. And whereas the Franklin High School Pom-Pom Team has distinguished itself by achieving the 2022 Mid-American Pom-Pom Division One State Championship Title. And whereas Franklin Pom-Pom achieved this accomplishment in the Mid-American Pom-Pom Varsity category with a score of 498 out of a possible 550 points at the competition at Eastern Michigan University on February 13th, 2022. And whereas this adds to the outstanding accomplishments that the team achieved during its 2021-2022 season, including making school history with a perfect season that included winning the High Kick Competition in November, followed by winning the Regional Competition to qualify for state competition. Now therefore, be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education do hereby commend and congratulate the Franklin High School Pom-Pom Team for its outstanding accomplishments and wish all of the team members well in their future endeavors as they apply the discipline and perseverance needed to excel in sports to all areas of their lives. Again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Jarvis. With this resolution, I'll give it to you. You can share it. I'll print another one. All right. We've also, if you'd like to hang, hang up here as well, we're going to call each Palmer up. We've got a special certificate prepared for each member of the team. And the certificate reads Livonia Public Schools Certificate of Achievement, Franklin High School Pom-Pom State Champions, Mid-American Pom-Pom Division One, honored by the Board of Education for Athletic Achievement, April 4th, 2022, signed by Superintendent Andrea Oquist and Board President Colleen Burton. So, girls, as I call your name, if you would come up and receive your certificate.
And if we have a parent that would, a couple of parents that want to come up closer this way?
Oh, yes.
So you can get the angle here as your?
Yeah, feel free to, feel free to take pictures.
As your daughter comes up, we, we welcome you to do that, so you get a great shot.
You're welcome to come up behind here.
Okay, no problem. Okay, so this will also serve as a great introduction to the members of the team. We'll start with the senior captains, Kayla Petrovich. Okay, Kayla could not be here tonight. Haley Shingler. Congratulations. Kalen Benson. You're welcome. Congratulations. Sophie Nomides?
Nomides.
Nomides. Oh, I went back and forth on that one. Okay. Sophie couldn't be here tonight, so the captains will make sure that they get those. Next up, we have our juniors, Megan Swiston. Congratulations. And Grace McCowsky. Congratulations. It's so cool, I recognize some of these girls from Grant Elementary way back in the day. Next up, we have our sophomore crew, which is pretty large. Brienne Horgan, please. Brienne? Oh, Brienne, okay, thank you. Savannah Hodges. Congratulations. Ava Fan. There you go, congratulations. Lauren Cuttrich. Okay. Madeline Shiner.
Hi. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is it Daviney?
Daviney.
Daviney Scott. Congratulations. Lily Shambara. Alyssa Grease. Lily Poisson. Congratulations. Izzy Anderson. And our freshman crew is Caitlin Fugetti. Malia, Malia Wyatt. And Emily Young. Okay. There you go. Let's see, what do I have up next? I have, I need to make another one of these. A special, a special certificate for the coaches as well. So I'll give that one to you, and I owe you one. Okay? Thank you, Brooke. Join me again in congratulating the Franklin High School Pom-Pom on this amazing achievement. Congratulations.
Are there comments or questions by Board members or the Superintendent? Mrs. Oquist?
Well, I would love to congratulate you. I am so excited for you. I'm so excited. It is a challenging sport that requires so much dedication. I was a longtime Pom Mom for many years and enjoyed many regional and state competitions. I know how hard it is to earn those points and all of the things you have to do to get there. The dedication is enormous, and we are so excited for you. You must have just been thrilled that day. I had a chance to see your routine, and it was a wow. It was a wow. Congratulations.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions from the Board? Our congratulations, ladies. Well, well done. At this time, we have a motion for recognition of the MHSAA Division One State Championships, Franklin High School Varsity Pom-Pom Team. Motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. And Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis? Yes. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
At this time, we have more recognition to give out. We are on item 3B, Recognition of MHSAA Division One State Champions Franklin High School Boys Bowling Team. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution recognizing Franklin High School Boys Bowling for achieving the Michigan High School Athletic Association Division One State Championship Title.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mrs. Jenkins?
Thank you, President Burton. And ruling right along here. It is one of those nights. These are just fly, the puns are just flying. Just four short years after Livonia Public Schools added Girls and Boys Bowling to its athletic offerings at all three high schools, here we are tonight, already recognizing one of the teams for achieving the top spot in the entire state of Michigan. Please help me welcome Coach Dan Hechka, coach of the Franklin High School Boys Bowling Team. Dan's right back there. And if I could also ask Board President Colleen Burton to join us at the podium to read a special resolution that we've prepared for the team.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We are beyond thrilled to be here this evening. It's been a long road to get to the point where we could add a few sports and, and top on that list was, one of the top two was bowling. So to be here, number one, to even have the team is a thrill. And then to be able to have you guys just excel to the very top of the state is just, just absolutely exciting. Board of Education, April 4th, 2022 Resolution, Whereas the trustees of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education are desirous of publicly recognizing the outstanding accomplishments of students who distinguish themselves during the pursuit of their public education in the school district. And whereas the Franklin High School Boys Bowling Team has distinguished itself by achieving the 2022 Michigan High School Athletic Association Boys Bowling Division One State Championship Title. And whereas Franklin Boys Bowling achieved this accomplishment following a MHSAA Regional Championship and three successful rounds at the state championship on March 4th, 2022. And whereas this accomplishment capped off an outstanding season for Franklin Boys Bowling, which achieved many successes during its season, including making school history for this four-year-old program and achieving a 15-1 overall record for the season, which included three in-season tournament wins and 12 conference wins. Now therefore, be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education do hereby commend and congratulate the Franklin High School Boys Bowling Team for its outstanding accomplishments and wish all the members of the team well for their future endeavors as they apply the discipline and perseverance needed to excel in sports to all areas of their lives. Congratulations.
And I'll have you hang out here with me. Thank you, President Burton. I have another special announcement here to add icing on the cake. We've been informed that Coach Hechka, he didn't know I was going to do this, was named Coach of the Year by the Michigan High School Interscholastic Bowling Coaches Association. So congratulations, ladies. And of course, I have a special certificate here in my stack of items. I wanted to read it, I'm sorry. There's so many.
Sorry, we had a lot of signing of certificates immediately before the meeting, and it got Mrs. Jenkins' pile out of order, so.
Okay, I found it. Okay, so we've prepared this special certificate for Coach Hechka, Livonia Public Schools Certificate of Achievement, Division One Coach of the Year, Michigan High School Interscholastic Bowling Coaches Association, Daniel Hechka, honored by the Board of Education for outstanding coaching achievement. Dated April 4th, 2022, signed by Superintendent Andrea Oquist and Board President Colleen Burton. So congratulations on that. Okay, and now we would like to present each of our, each member of the Franklin Boys Bowling Team with their certificates that we've prepared. And also, this will serve as an introduction to all of the team members. So first?
Again, as, as we did with our Pom parents, if there are any bowling parents present who would like to come forward to get a better angle on some photographs, feel free to do so.
Okay, so first up, we have Joshua Bamaleski. Next up, we have Ian Kane. Congratulations. Griffin Cartier. Keith MacLeod. Congratulations. Jordan Suruk. Can I leave that with you? Okay, Jordan was not able to be with us. Sam White? Not here?
Driver's Ed, you know these guys?
Oh, boy.
They had to get it in after the season was over.
That's right.
Alex Mengele. And Ian Wright.
And Coach, would you like to say a few words about your team and your season this year?
I'll keep it quick.
Okay.
Thank you very much. First of all, on behalf of the Franklin Bowling, Boys Bowling Team, we'd like to congratulate the Pom-Pom Team and Ms. Ruffing on their state championships, Patriot pride, right? And we always talk in the press box in the fall, so we're really happy and proud of you guys. And on behalf of the Franklin Bowling Family, I'd like to thank you for the recognition tonight and to offer the most sincere appreciation for the actions taken in 2018 to make bowling a high school sport in Livonia. These young men and all of the student athletes at all three high schools make Livonia Public Schools proud with their talent and sportsmanship. The young men behind me have worked very hard at their craft, and I'm very proud of their efforts and accomplishments these past four seasons. In addition, the parents behind me, or to the side of me, have been very supportive of all of the needs of the boys and the team. We could not have accomplished any of this without our parents. And just to give you a real quick overview of our, our program and the season, as already mentioned, the Varsity Bowling Team is in its fourth year of existence in all three high schools and in LPS, in all three high schools at LPS, in LPS, excuse me. In that short time, this group has won three division championships, one conference championship, two regional championships, and now an MHSAA Division One State Championship. These Patriots have set multiple state records this season alone. They own the state high game of 1268, which averages out to 255 a man in a single game. They possess three of the top 10 high school games in Michigan. These Patriots also own three of the top six series in Michigan, claiming the top spot of 2326, which is 232 a game per. These Patriots also own three of the top six series in Michigan, claiming the top spot of 2326, which is 232 a game per two games. The 2022 Patriots were the only team to have four All-Region bowlers in Michigan. Josh Bombaluski, Ian Kane, Keith MacLeod, and Ian Wright. Franklin is the only school to have two first-team All-State bowlers in Michigan, Ian Kane and Ian Wright. Also, the Patriots are the only team in Division One ever to win a team state championship and single state championship the same year. As you, was already noted, or maybe hasn't been noted yet, on March 5th, Ian Wright captured the state singles championship in dramatic fashion. And although they were introduced, if I could just say their names one more time and what their accomplishments were this year. Junior Sam White was not, is not with us tonight. Junior, three-time All-Conference, All-Region, All-State, State Singles Champion, Ian Wright. Senior, All-Conference, All-Region, Josh Bombaluski. Senior, Griffin Cartier, who's going to bowl at Madonna University. Senior, four-year Varsity Bowler, four-time All-Conference, three-time All-Region, two-time All-State, and one-time State Runner, Singles Runner-Up in 2020, that's Ian Kane. Senior, All-Region, Keith MacLeod, who's also going to Madonna University next year to bowl. And a four-year Varsity Bowler, Jordan Suruk, who's not with us. Once again, thank you very much for this recognition. Thank you to Mary Bowl Lanes, which is the home of the, all of Livonia teams and their support. Thank you to the Board, the administration, the community for the support you've given us. It seems like everywhere I go, everyone asks, "How's the Franklin Bowling Team? How's the Franklin Bowling Team?" So these young men have made the community proud in and out of the classroom. Patriots, always true. Thank you.
Any comments from our superintendent or board members?
Great, thank you.
That is incredibly impressive. Mrs. Oakwist?
Well, I think you can answer that, Coach, by saying they're pretty exceptional, right? When they say, "How's Franklin Bowling?"
They make you look good.
Oh, my goodness gracious. And you have given so much to the team. We are so tremendously proud of you. Every year, it just seems like you continue to rise and rise and rise. And truly, I know we're going to be doing individual honors in just a moment. But really, to have the Division One State Champion Individual Bowler and Team is truly exceptional. We are so tremendously proud of you, your dedication both in and out of the classroom. We are, we are so excited for your success and we can't wait to see you. We know we're going to see you here again.
Mrs. Bradford?
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate the bowlers as well as the Pom and Franklin High School. Way to go. So proud of Franklin and all their programs. And I hear there was a lot of seniors. Are we going to have a bumper crop for next year, too? We coming back with some bowlers?
We have some good guys coming up, for sure.
Great. I just want to say congratulations to the whole team and can't wait to hear about the future years. So congratulations.
Any other comments from any of their board members? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. I remember a night a little more than four years ago, and I think it was Ian Wright that came and made a passionate plea for a bowling team. Was Ken with them? I remember that night and we're so fortunate that we moved forward with that. And you guys, you know, did us proud. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford for recognition of the MHSAA Division One State Champions Franklin High School Boys Bowling Team. Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. Congratulations again, gentlemen.
President Burton, before we move on to the next agenda, in all of the excitement of the first item, I was remiss in inviting our Pom coaches to say a few words about these wonderful girls. So if you, if you don't mind, saying a few words about your team and your season? Thank you.
Oh, no, go right ahead.
So this season definitely was very exciting. You know, the high kick win was at first very unexpected. We were all very excited. And then the state win was even more unexpected. But after reflecting on all of the hard work and the passion and the dedication that these girls have put into the season, it really proves that they really earned it. You know, like they spend a lot of time after school practicing and they spend time outside of practice practicing and sending us videos and asking each other how they can improve. And it really just showed on the floor how dedicated they are, not only to each other, but to their sport. And as you all were describing our team, the two words that really stuck out to me were passion and discipline. Those are the two, I think, main things that really encompass what Pom is. You know, these girls are very disciplined and they have to manage their time in school and in Pom and in their activities. Because if they want to hang out with their friends, you know, they got to get their stuff done first. And they all have really proven to us that they, they can do it and that they won a state championship. It's really exciting.
Do you have anything to add?
To just maybe go on their accomplishments a bit more, not just showing they earned it. They did a seven and a half point gap at high kick, which is very uncommon. And that state did a nine and a half point gap between the second and the first place team, which is ginormous. Yes, it's huge. It's very unheard of, very, we are very, very unbelievably proud of these girls. We are typically at a loss for words of how to explain them. They are truly one of a kind.
That's excellent. Thank you so much. And you know, on our resolutions, it says, almost at the end of all of them, it says that you've taken these characteristics and you can apply them to any aspect of your life, which is absolutely true. Passion and discipline, which, which all of you who are being honored this evening have displayed incredible amounts of, will take you in whatever area in your lives you want to go. We are back to our next item on our agenda this evening. More recognitions of exciting things. Item 3C on our agenda is the recognition of the MHSAA Division One State Champion Bowler, Ian Wright, Franklin High School. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution recognizing Franklin High School Boys Bowling Team Member, Ian Wright, for achieving the Michigan High School Athletic Association Division One Individual State Championship Title.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Jenkins?
Thank you, President Burton. The success of the Franklin High School Boys Bowling Team didn't end with the team's incredible state championship. The team also celebrated one of its own, Ian Wright, who rolled his way to a Michigan High School Athletic Association Division One Individual State Championship. Coach Hetchka and Ian Wright, will you please join me once again at the podium? Okay, I'm going to do this a little bit different than the previous presentations. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Ian. Come on up here. Don't be shy. Ian has been bowling since age four.
Oh, wow.
With bumpers or no? With bumpers, yes. If you can imagine that. And he says that he's been hooked on the sport ever since. This is his third year on the Franklin Bowling Team. Outside of high school competition, Ian placed 17th in the National Junior Gold Tournament in 2021 in the 18-U Division. He holds two first-place titles in the Michigan Junior Masters Association. He is supported by his parents, Jason and Sherry, along with his brother Aaron, who is a 2020 Franklin grad, who is also on the Franklin Bowling Team for the first two years that the team was in existence. At this time, if I could ask Board Trustee Dan Centers to join us at the podium to read a special resolution that we've created especially for Ian.
And Ian, I still use the bumpers, so. Resolution. Whereas the trustees of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education are desirous of publicly recognizing the outstanding accomplishments of students who distinguish themselves during their pursuit of their public education in the school district. And whereas Ian Wright, a junior at Franklin High School, has distinguished himself by achieving the 2022 Michigan High School Athletic Association Boys Bowling Division One Individual State Championship Title. And whereas Ian achieved this accomplishment after four rounds of bracket play to win the state championship individual title on March 5th, 2022. And whereas this accomplishment capped off an outstanding season for Ian, who carried a 225 cumulative average, a 219 average in meet play, and achieved the second highest average in Kensington Lakes Athletic Association while qualifying for state championship tournament by averaging 220 points over six games. Now therefore be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education do hereby commend and congratulate Ian Wright for his outstanding accomplishments and wish him well in his future endeavors as he applies the discipline and perseverance needed to excel in sports to all areas of his life.
Any comments, Ian? They're passing. Alrighty. Comments or questions from our superintendent or our board members? Mrs. Oakwist?
Well, certainly, I want to also share that we have Principal Andrew Pacey here tonight and Athletic Director Ron Hammey. I don't know if we have other folks here from our Franklin team. But I know that those two are both certainly very big supporters of both of the programs and all of our student athletes. And really, what a tremendous community Franklin is. The pride that runs through is interwoven in everything that you do. And we are so, we're just blown away to be able to honor three different state championships from Franklin here this evening. So congratulations to each one of you for earning this.
Any other comments from board members? Congratulations, Ian. It's an incredible accomplishment. We have at this time a motion, a recognition of MHSAA Division One State Championship Bowler, Ian Wright, of Franklin High School. Motion by Mr. Centers and supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. Congratulations again, Ian. The next item on our agenda this evening is item 3D, recognition of MHSAA Division One State Champion Gymnast, Morgan Ruffing, All-Around State, All-Around Champion Livonia Red Gymnastics. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution recognizing Franklin High School Gymnast Morgan Ruffing for capturing the Michigan High School Athletic Association Division One All-Around Title at the MHSAA Gymnastics State Championship.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Jenkins?
Thank you, President Burton. I will skip the pun on this one unless we swing over to gymnastics. I'm not sure. We continue the trend this evening in recognizing Franklin High School athletes for their outstanding achievements by introducing you to Franklin High School Junior Morgan Ruffing, who is the MHSAA Gymnastics Division One All-Around State Champion. Morgan and Coach Mandy Brown, if you could join me at the podium? Hi. Morgan started gymnastics about 13 years ago. So you can tell, just use your thoughts or imagination, your math, to figure that she started gymnastics when she was a toddler. When she was, this is her third year on Livonia Red Gymnastics, which is comprised of gymnasts from Franklin and Churchill High Schools. Although Morgan was recognized in the all-around category, meaning she had the highest total score after four events at the state competition, and those being vault, beam, uneven bars, and floor exercise. She said her favorite event is floor exercise. Outside of gymnastics, Morgan serves on the Franklin High School Student Congress and she enjoys hanging out with her friends. She thanks her mom, Beth, for all of her support throughout her gymnastics career. And with that, I would like to invite Board Vice President Mark Johnson to join us at the podium to read a special resolution that we've prepared for Morgan.
And if Morgan has any family members here, you are welcome to move around, any of you are, to take some photographs if you'd like, as your folks are honored.
Congratulations, Morgan. I have trouble balancing, just put my socks on, so. I'm jealous. Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Resolution. Whereas the trustees of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education are desirous of publicly recognizing the outstanding accomplishments of students who distinguish themselves during the pursuit of their public education in the school district. And whereas Morgan Ruffing, a junior at Franklin High School, has distinguished herself by achieving the 2022 Michigan High School Athletic Association Division One All-Around Title at the Gymnastics State Championship. And whereas Morgan achieved this accomplishment as a member of the Livonia Red Gymnastics Team by earning the highest combined score of 37.525 after four events, vault, beam, uneven bars, and floor exercise. And whereas this adds to the outstanding accomplishments Morgan has achieved during the 2021-2022 season, including winning best all-around at dual meets and conferences, tying the school record in floor exercise with a score of 9.8 at regionals, and contributing to a new team-school record at regionals. Now therefore be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education do hereby commend and congratulate Morgan Ruffing for her outstanding accomplishments in athletics and wish her well in her future endeavors as she applies the discipline and perseverance needed to excel in sports to all areas of her life. Congratulations.
Any comments you guys would like to share? Okay, we do have one more, one more coming up.
Yes, we do have one more.
Alright. Do we have comments or questions from the superintendent or board members? Mrs. Oakwist?
Well, it is hard not to celebrate these amazing, these amazing student athletes. So congratulations, Morgan. What, what an accomplishment across the state, the all-around gymnast in Division One. That is absolutely tremendous. And I believe, Coach, please correct us, that the team overall was third in the state. Is that correct in Division One? Just a tremendous showing all across the world. And I know we have another recognition coming right up behind this and certainly celebrating, again, the tremendous accomplishments, both individually and as a team. So we are so proud of you.
Any other comments from board members? And we may, I'm going to, I'm going to put both of mine together for both of the Livonia Red gymnasts. And I'll hold off mine for just a moment. We have a recognition, we have to vote on these individually, sorry, folks. We have a recognition of MHSAA Division One State Champion Gymnast Morgan Ruffing, All-Around Champion Livonia Red Gymnastics. Motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. Congratulations, Morgan. And we have one more of Morgan's teammates to congratulate also. The next item on our agenda is item 3E, recognition of MHSAA Division One State Champion Gymnast Avery Boyk, Uneven Bars Livonia Red Gymnastics. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Acosta?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution recognizing Churchill High School Gymnast Avery Boyk for capturing the Michigan High School Athletic Association Division One State Championship on the uneven bars.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Jenkins?
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
We continue, President Burton.
Finally, I'm pleased to recognize another state champion gymnast, who is also on the Livonia Red Team. Avery Boyk, a senior at Churchill High School, won the MHSAA Gymnastics Division One Uneven Bars Category State Championship. Avery and Coach Mandy Brown, if you could please join me again at the podium? Okay, so in keeping with the trend, Avery has also been involved in gymnastics since a little toddler, age three. And her favorite event is the uneven bars. Surprise, surprise on that, right? How many years have you been on Livonia Red?
Two.
Two years, okay. At this time, I would like to invite Board Trustee Madeline Acosta to join us at the podium to read a special resolution that we've prepared for Avery. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Whereas the trustees of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education are desirous of publicly recognizing the outstanding accomplishments of students who distinguish themselves during the pursuit of their public education in the school district. And whereas Avery Boyk, a senior at Churchill High School, has distinguished herself by achieving the 2022 Michigan High School Athletic Association Division One Individual Gymnastics State Championship on the uneven bars. And whereas Avery achieved this accomplishment as a member of the Livonia Red Gymnastics Team by earning a score of 9.675. And whereas this adds to the outstanding accomplishments Avery has achieved during the 2021-2022 season, including breaking her own record on the uneven bars, placing first in the All Around Category, contributing to a new team-school record at regionals, and placing first in All Around at dual meets throughout the season. Now therefore be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education do hereby commend and congratulate Avery Boyk for her outstanding accomplishments in athletics and wish her well in her future endeavors as she applies the discipline and perseverance needed to excel in sports to all areas of her life.
Okay, likewise.
Would you like to share a few words with us?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you everyone for just supporting.
If you'd like to join us Morgan, these are really for both of you at this point.
For supporting these two awesome gymnasts. As they said, we had a great year, Livonia Reds best year. We obviously got the school record, which started off as a joke like four years ago with some of the girls. And we ended up accomplishing that. You know gymnastics isn't an easy sport in any way, as any of these other sports behind me. But it comes down to tents. And so Avery knew, almost towards the end, she kept asking, did I get the bar title? And you know, the girl that got second had a 9.625 and she had a 9.675. So it just goes to show, if she would have taken one step on her dismount, she wouldn't have got it. So it comes down to all these little pieces. Same with Morgan. She had to hit all four routines to win that. If you fall off the beam or a step out of bounds on floor or anything like that, it takes you out. So you have to be on your game that day. Nothing in the past matters in gymnastics. It matters on that day. So both of these girls and our team showed up that day and they're both completely hardworking. So I just want to congratulate both of them again. And thanks to everyone here and their parents and all the families, so thank you.
It's a pleasure to be here and just be recognized for everything. And I do want to appreciate my team behind me. I would not be here without them. They are amazing students and athletes and I just appreciate them so, so much. And I also want to congratulate the bowling team and the POM for their accomplishments because that's amazing too. And it's just amazing to be here.
Comments from our superintendent or board members?
Well, I'd love to just have a moment to have all of the parents of these student athletes. Would you please stand to be recognized for your support and just unwavering gifts that you've given, please? There are many, many hands that go into this kind of successes. I'm sure each of our student athletes would recognize from their coaches, to their administration, to their teachers, to their friends and support system. But we know that it takes our parents to really start young and to nurture that and to provide rides to and fro and that encouragement when things don't go well and that celebration when they do. So it really truly is a community effort, a team effort. And what a night this is. This has to be a record, I've got to tell you.
I think that it is, yep.
We just sit here just so, so tremendously proud of you and all that you've given of yourselves to get to this point. So thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments from any board members?
Well, being a gymnastics mom, I am in awe of what you folks have, what both of you ladies have accomplished. Gymnastics, just by its very nature, the whole sport is to do what your body is not designed to do. It's incredibly difficult. It comes with a lot of wraps and splints and visits to the doctor's offices at times. But congratulations ladies. And when, if you, if any of you have not yet, if you have the opportunity to watch a gymnastics meet, it is really, in person, it is really, really exciting. And to be able to do that, you can, you can perform tricks, but to do it, to win these kind of awards, you have to do it with a lot of grace. And congratulations ladies, very, very well done.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. And Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. At this time, we are going to go to our district update from the superintendent, after which we will take a brief five to 10 minute break so those in attendance this evening can congratulate all of our honorees.
And I would love to get some photos as well, some group photos. So stick around guys, look for me, okay? I'll look for you.
If you'd like to use this area up in the front to do photos, you're welcome to. It kind of gets a little crazy out there. Mrs., we're on to the district update for the superintendent.
Absolutely.
From Mrs. Okist.
Thank you so much, President Burton. Here we go. While these may not be state championships that we're highlighting, we are highlighting many of our students and many of our staff across the district. So if you'll take a look at any one of the screens, you'll be able to follow along with this wonderful update. So as you know, March is Reading Month is a pretty big deal, especially in our elementary schools. So we're going to highlight here a few of our schools. We have our Hayes Huskies showing their love of reading. Do we have any former Hayes Huskies here? We definitely have a few. I was a Hayes Husky as well. And, yes, Mrs. O'Brien. And we have some of our Rosedale Rizzo's here. Their theme was wild about reading. We had our state representative there to read. And you also see some of our Rosedale kiddos in their camouflage as they celebrated being wild about reading. At Webster Elementary, there was, you know, you think there's March Madness, right? That that's the only bracket that matters. I just heard about my son's bracket tonight. So they had a pretty cool book bracket and the students voted along the way throughout the month on their favorite book. And so you'll see that up going strong on the wall at Webster. March is Reading Month is a pretty big deal at all of our schools, but certainly at Hoover Elementary. We had some of our board members, I had the pleasure of reading, and a number of us from our team spent time the Friday before spring break and had a chance to read to some wonderful kiddos there. We had many wonderful guest readers in our GSRP preschool program. So you see their smiling faces. They are always eager listeners, ready to hear a great story. We had a number of our Roosevelt Elementary students. Do we have any Roosevelt grads here? Yeah, we see a few, all right. They really had a blast. They were dressing up as their favorite book characters. So you might recognize some of those characters on the screen. Big Red, I don't know how many of you remember the book Clifford? Anybody a Clifford fan? So that was, that was always a favorite. And Clifford made a visit to Jackson Early Childhood Center and probably the most popular guest reader, I have to say. And then they had a number of our schools do Battle of the Books. And so you see our students here at Webster enjoying participating in that. And we have one of our principals who, once the students reach their reading goal for the month of March, the kids get to choose the color of his hair for the month of April. And it is ocean blue. Yes, it's a whole month. Yes, last year it was green, so I'm thinking blue is, you know, maybe.
More subtle?
So that is, that is definitely dedication. And then also over at Nijiiro, the students got to pick the outfit for Mr. DeLuca, the principal. So you see him in the center there, quite decked out. And they got to pick after reading the most minutes during March is Reading Month. So there were many theme days, you know, a lot of our secondary schools, middle schools and high schools do spirit weeks. And so you see here some spirit days at Emerson. This was Blue Day and Decades Day. So some of our kiddos from Emerson and staff as well getting into that. And we had World Down Syndrome Day celebrated. And you see some of our wonderful Webster Elementary students and staff. They had some colorful, wacky socks that they shared on March 21st. And we love seeing their smiling faces and pretty cute feet there. Mr. Bentley and Mrs. Lee often coordinate father-daughter night. And I believe they also had a mother-son night. So they had a great time together, participating in a number of different activities over at Riley a couple of weeks ago. Recently, we had our Board Chamber President Dan West, Rob Dzwicki, who is on our LPS Foundation Board, and Mike Lukage hosted a fundraiser for the LPS Education Foundation. In just two hours, they were guest servers at the Grand Tavern, which is owned by a Churchill alum, raised almost $2,000 for our LPS Education Foundation just a couple of weekends ago. A great time was had by all. So I really want to point out, our LPTSA Council, they, they just do a tremendous job. You'll see them in a few minutes highlighted for their Founder's Day special event. But they really do a wonderful job recognizing some of the unsung heroes in our school district. And so they did some fundraising and they created over 100 care bags for the drivers and parapros within our Transportation Department and also provided a wonderful breakfast spread for our hardworking staff there. And so you see a few members of our Transportation Team. And we just want to thank the LPTSA Council for taking the time. They were here late one night filling those bags. And thank you to many of our community members who made donations to be able to provide that special delivery. So speaking of our PTSA Council, we had a number of folks gathered just, was that just last week? No, last week was spring break.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. Okay, two weeks ago. And the PTSA was founded 125 years ago, really as an advocacy organization. And many of our local units were represented there, as well as our district council. So great celebration. We want to highlight a project that was really a compilation of efforts from our Western Wayne Skill Center. You've heard us highlight Skillful Designs. It's one of our programs at the Western Wayne Skill Center. The students there, you'll see in a couple of those pictures, worked thanks to the efforts of the Testa family for organizing this partnership along with Mrs. Lynn, the principal at Hoover, and Dr. Meese at Garfield, and our Skillful Designs teacher, who is our Secondary Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Monday. And her amazing students created the rockets that you see adorning the hallways of Hoover, one for every teacher. So you've seen the pencil signs maybe hanging previously. They created and designed and raised the funds to purchase the materials for our Skillful Design students to create those for all of the staff at Hoover. And I'm so privileged that they are gifting me one as well. So I want to thank them for their efforts. And a similar project is in the works for Grant Elementary. So we love those partnerships that happen across our district. And I know we'll be recognizing our Franklin football team for a similar project a little later in the evening. But the Charger football team, led by Coach Fiegel, picked up about 45 bags of trash from around Churchill and the adjoining neighborhoods earlier this month. We love to see those community efforts by our student athletes taking place across the district. And we had our Stevenson High School students created seven Easter baskets for the Michigan Foster Care Closet just prior to spring break and had some wonderful goodies in there. We wanted to highlight that we had our tech leaders. So with a new position, our Media and Technology Coordinators, Mrs. Bowling and Mr. Cosada, along with one of our media specialists, Mr. Pinta, represented Livonia Public Schools at the Risa Makers Conference and did some amazing technology presentations and learning. Last week and the week prior, I think you will all agree, we had some amazing music highlights. So the String Fling is always a great event. It's a district-wide event that highlights our students from fifth grade to 12th grade, who are in orchestra. And so the top picture was the event held just prior to break with our string musicians from across the district. And then on the bottom, you'll see some pics from Bandarama, featuring our band students from upper elementary, middle school, and high school. And it's just so neat when they come together at the very end and play a combined piece, having never played together before. It just goes to show the amazing work of our music educators and the dedication of our students. So those were a highlight and you'll see a few more in a moment. So we want to congratulate this team. Once again, our Board of Education has been named a Board of Education Honor Board for the state of Michigan. There are only a handful across the entire state. That means all of our board continues to participate in pretty extensive professional development on the weekends and in the evenings to earn that designation. And then also trustee Liz Jarvis, who will be receiving the MASB Award of Distinction. So congratulations to all of you and thank you. We had writing honors. We had many students who were honored by the Hinoki Foundation Japanese Writing Contest. I believe just about all of the students who were awarded in that writing contest came from Nijiiro Elementary. They did an absolutely tremendous job. The PTSA Reflections Contest, I might have to pull this up on my screen. Talk about small print. Somebody just mentioned small print earlier. So be patient with me, I'm going to pull that up on here. We had a, we had a number of state winners. And so you know, there are local winners and then they go up to the state competition. We had Outstanding Interpretation, a national qualifier. Alexis Sang in third grade at Webster Elementary. And her theme was, "I Will Change the World by Curing Cancer." And so that is on the left. On the right, we had music competition, music composition in the primary age division, Aladaw, first grade at Grant Elementary. And her original composition was called "Being Kind." First grade, I just want to note. It's a pretty big deal. And then we had another Outstanding Interpretation National Qualifier in Visual Arts from Churchill High School, Chase Reynolds. And his, his picture was entitled Hendrix, appropriately so. And then we had an honorable mention, a third grader from Kennedy Elementary, Sienna Willemowski, "How Alexia Changed the World." And she told a wonderful story. So congratulations to all of those state winners. We want to move on to DECA. As you know, many of our students who are involved in the marketing and business classes at our high schools participate in the State Career Development Conference. They went to Detroit this year. So we had 25 Stevenson DECA members who went to the State Career Development Conference and they competed among 5,000 DECA members from all over the state. And I wanted to acknowledge that the highest test score, we had Adi Prahan, Michael Ledbetter, Priscina Abraham, Kail Meyer, Andrew Lithgow, and Rebecca Ola. The highest score on a role-play event, you'll see some familiar names, Adhi Pradhhan, Priscina Abraham, and Victor Porter. And we had a number of overall finalists in those students who will be going on to the International DECA Competition. So congratulations to those students. Of course, not to be outdone, we had a number of Franklin students experience success. We have Solomon and Olivia, Jacob, Nathan, Alexis, and Sunny. And you will see that they were finalists in, did I not forward that? Yes, I forwarded that, okay. In professional selling, restaurant management, business management, ethics team event, and another ethics team event winner. So again, similar to our student athletes, many of these, whether it's music or performance or in DECA, much goes into preparation for the or in DECA, much goes into preparation for these events. We also had a number of Churchill students. Congratulations to, I need to click. Yes, I'm trying to do both. Here we go. Thank you. Congrats to Churchill students Liz Tracy, Arshana Chandran, Ethan Webster, Harish Jekhansar, Arin Patel and Jayden Raji for advancing to DECA Nationals. So these students will all be moving on to the national competition, I believe, next month. We are going to just, you'll see some familiar faces. We certainly wanted to include these, these wonderful accomplishments in here because we are actually going to be sharing this set of highlights with our community. There are so many wonderful things to share. So again, we see our great Franklin High School pom-pom team, ready number one in the state. And we also want to congratulate the Churchill High School pom team for placing first in Division 2 at the state championship. And also, we have some folks, although you have a young team, we also have our JV team who did extremely well as well in the Junior Varsity Franklin School Pom-Pom Squad. And I know you have a young squad continuing to come up, so I have no doubt we'll, we'll see you back. And we see the Franklin Boys Bowling D1 Championship Team here. And also our Ian Wright for the individual state championship. Highlighting Coach Hetchken, of course, all of his efforts from the Michigan High School Interscholastic Bowling Coaches Association, representing the entire state. So congratulations again, Coach, for that. And we have Morgan Ruffing here for her All-Around Category Division 1. We were able to celebrate Morgan and Avery a little earlier in the meeting for their individual state championships. And the overall success of Livonia read this entire season. We wanted to share some of our vocalists. So they have the solo and ensemble championship or contest, and then also the MSBOA Festival that took place. And so we have students here, and we have some students from Stevenson that received a Division 1 rating at this, at this ensemble contest. Macy Barr, Isabel Greenway, Kate Stromberg, Ashlyn Wyland, the Women's Ensemble and the Nightingales. The SHS Select Choir had an overall Division 2 rating. So congratulations to them. And we see here, I know a number of us had a chance to attend as well the MSBOA Festival. It really is an opportunity to both perform some of your very best pieces, but also to have an opportunity to learn from some of the judges there. And so we see both, I believe, a Stevenson and a Holmes group of student musicians there, as well as their instructors. And we also had, congratulations to the Churchill Symphony Band and their Wind Ensemble, Ensemble for their exceptional performance at the MSBOA Band Festival. They are, it really takes tremendous talent. And when you get to this point, you're usually performing two pieces on which you have spent quite a bit of time. And so they received the top Division 1 Superior Ratings and received all As from the adjudicators upon completion of their program. And the greatness never ends, I'll tell you. I mean, this is a highlight. We had, congratulations to our Livonia Warriors and Tyros teams. The regional tournament was held just a few weeks ago over at Churchill High School. And the Livonia Warriors won the entire tournament. We had teams from across the state. I believe there were, I think, almost 50 teams, Mrs. Jarvis?
38.
There, and they also won the Chairman's Award. The Tyros team also did extremely well. They made it to the playoffs and they had a wonderful weekend this past weekend at the McComb Conference as well. So we are excited to watch them next weekend in their state competition, and we hope they will just continue to excel. We want to congratulate Senior Isabel Bailey from Franklin High School. Her artwork is actually featured in the April issue of Guitar World Magazine. And her piece portrays one of her favorite guitarists. So congratulations to Isabel. And just a few more notes, we want you to mark your calendar. There's always something great going on. If you like Mod Pizza, April 6 is your day, that's Wednesday. The Middle Belt location is going to donate a portion of their sales to the LPS Education Foundation. We have the Career Technical Center is hosting their annual charity fashion show benefiting First Step. So if you'd like to attend, it's at St. Mary's Cultural Center. There's a QR code, and when we send this out, that is a link that you can access for ticket information. So their show is called "To the Nines." And the Franklin Players will be presenting Anastasia, so that's coming up shortly. Are any of you involved at that? You don't have time, right? Okay, I get it. So that will be May 5 through 7, and the QR code has ticket information. Kappa will be presenting Kodachrome, April 21 through 24. So ticket information will be posted on the website for you. And then this Saturday, a special game, Playing for a Cause. The softball teams from both Churchill and Stevenson will be playing a rivalry, rivalry game to benefit the JV coach who is undergoing cancer treatment. And so we, you may support the cause by donating at the address shown on the flyer. And our Fine Art Showcase, so we have students from kindergarten through 12th grade. Their art teachers have selected wonderful pieces to share. The opening night is this Thursday from 5:30 to 7:00, but that will stay up through the month at the Livonia Library. If you have a chance to take a look, to see our talented students on display, we're always so appreciative that the library hosts the Fine Art Festival. And we congratulate all of our students who are in there and our teachers who helped create those. And so just a few quick reminders, kindergarten registration is open, information on the community hub. And the LPS Education Foundation has created an alumni group. So those of you who may be listening and are an LPS alumni, we encourage you to fill out that short Google form and join us in all of the excitement to come. President Burton, that was a long one. But as you know, we have a lot of talented kiddos, staff and schools, so we appreciate the opportunity to celebrate them.
That is the joy of the spring, when we have so many activities culminating and so many things to celebrate. At this time, I'm going to call for a short recess, probably five to 10 minutes or so, so we can congratulate all of our honorees this evening. If you have the time and want to stick around, right after that, we're going to appoint some wonderful people to new positions in Livonia Public Schools. So we'll be back in five to 10 minutes or so. We're now at recess.
Welcome to the continuation of the regular board meeting of Livonia Public Schools Board of Education, April 4th, 2022. We had a million things to celebrate just within the last hour, hour and a half or so. If you missed them, by the time this is uploaded tomorrow morning, go back and rewind it and watch it again because just a lot to celebrate with all the activities of our students and our staff. We are up right now to the, to item three G, written communications. Does any board member have written communications that they need to share? All righty. These next few we'll clip together quick and we'll celebrate a few more fun things. Next item is response to prior audience communications. I do not have any at this time. The next item on our agenda is three I, audience communications. Are there any members of the audience who would like to participate with audience communications this evening? All righty. Seeing none, next item on our agenda is item four, our consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Bradford.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public School School District approved the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. Five A, minutes of the regular meeting of February 28th, 2022. Eight A, approval of cooperative agreements for Livonia Career Technical Center. Eight B, approval of cooperative agreements for the Livonia Transition Program.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Johnson. Are there any items that board members would like removed from the consent agenda for voting individually before we vote on them as a group? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Johnson for the consent agenda. Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bradford says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. That brings us on to more fun things to celebrate this evening. We are down on our, on our agenda right now to item six is Personnel Matters and six A is Appointment Director of Secondary Programs and District Services. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public School School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Kevin E. Two as the Director of Secondary Programs and District Services, effective July 1st, 2022.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Acosta, and we will be turning this over to Mrs. O'Quinn.
Thank you so much, President Burton. We are absolutely thrilled to bring forward this recommendation this evening. As you know, we are soon going to be facing the retirement of our invaluable current director, Mr. Daniel Willenborg, who will be celebrating just a short time with his retirement resolution. That has created the need to seek a new Director of Secondary Programs. So in this role, the Director oversees all of our middle schools, our high schools, post-secondary programs, the staff, the students, the programs, and then we add the district services part. And so that, that may vary depending on the role and the needs of the district, but we are very excited to be recommending Mr. Kevin E. Two, and I'd love to share with you a little bit about Kevin formally and then informally. So currently, Mr. Kevin E. Two is Principal of Churchill High School. He comes from a family of educators and, but began his career in the business world. He prepared for his education career at Western Michigan, Winthrop, and Wayne State Universities, where he earned a Bachelor's of Business Administration, a Master's of Secondary Education in Business and Marketing, and a Master's of Educational Administration at each of those universities. Kevin has really distinguished himself, as you know, as a very impactful educator and leader over his 19-year career in LPS. He has served in many roles. He began his full-time teaching career in 2005 at the Livonia Career Technical Center, where he taught innovative business courses for about six years. During that time, he also served as the Academic Articulation Coordinator for LCTC, and he coached student athletes on the varsity football and girls JV and varsity basketball teams. Yes. Really?
Two weeks.
Okay. Okay. We'll stick with the other highlights. If you want to add any later, you can. In 2011, Kevin was appointed as Assistant Principal at Churchill High School, where he has been successfully supporting students and staff for the next six years until his promotion to Principal of Churchill in 2017. As you know, he certainly carries the shield and passion for the Churchill community. He leads with integrity. He sets an example for, for others. He is a leader among leaders. As you know, he serves as the co-president of the LEEDs organization. He is just truly a consistent, steady, and dedicated example of leadership and a proud part of our administrative leadership team in Livonia. He has shown such steady leadership and confidence, not only in, throughout his time at Churchill, but especially during this very challenging time of the pandemic. We had many opportunities to, to talk with one another, to counsel one another, to have an opportunity to really talk about what is in the best interest of the students we serve, what is in the best interest of the staff entrusted to us. And he was always just a great barometer of those, of those pieces as we talked through the elements throughout this, throughout the pandemic. So we've continued to see that through Kevin. We've continued to watch his leadership grow, not only in his roles as Assistant Principal and Principal, but also through LEEDs. And we are thrilled to have this opportunity now to be able to have him come on and work alongside Dan while certainly still keeping two feet firmly planted in Churchill as well. So we hope, hopefully you have a third foot that you can also put here in Central Office. But personally, I have enjoyed the opportunity to get to know Kevin as a person, as a leader, hear about his wonderful family, and I know he has a very proud family at home as well, which I'm sure we'll hear about. So while we have no doubt he will always carry Charger Nation in his heart, we expect to also see him every once in a while in the red, white, and blue, the double blue and white, Frost, Holmes, and Emerson colors as well in his new role as Secondary Director, and we are thrilled to recommend him to join our pretty outstanding cabinet team, who you know do tremendous work each and every day.
Absolutely. Thank you. Are there comments or questions from our board colleagues? Mr. Centers?
I just want to congratulate Mr. E. Two. Our principals are community leaders.
We haven't brought it yet, Dan.
Oh, that's true. I think you might, we might have the votes. Our, our principals are definitely community leaders, but I think our high school principals even more so just because of the peer number of students they have, the athletics, the prominence, and that really is a unique role in the community. And all of our high school principals are, are really great. Kevin, from the beginning, the first day he became a principal, though, it was, you know, some people you feel like they're, they're warming into the job, but Kevin looked like day one, like I'm the principal. It always carried himself as a principal with such class, calm, steady hand at the wheel. So definitely appreciate all you've done and will continue to do for the district.
Thank you. Comments from other board members?
We are thrilled. And whenever we see any retirements, it's, it's always such a bittersweet thing. We're always so excited for folks who are retiring, and yet they always leave behind such shoes to fill. When your name came forward to the Board of Education for this approval process, we were, we were just thrilled. Happy to know that you applied for the position because it's an enormously demanding job. I think most folks don't realize how many hours our cabinet team puts in, every single one of them, and, and these last two years have been just nutty. It's been nutty for everybody in every industry, no matter what you're doing. But, but our cabinet team, literally a lot of nights and weekends trying to make sure that, that our, our staff and our students and our parents had what they needed to function. And that, that goes down a tad now that we're thankfully on the other side of COVID. But, but it's, it's. Yeah, it's just, just a tad, yeah. But to be one of, one of the top leaders of our district is an enormously challenging job, and it's, it's nice to know as a Board of Education that we have every confidence that you are going to be a phenomenal asset to the team. We're going to miss, miss Mr. Willenborg desperately, and we will, we will be talking about you momentarily. But it's, it's phenomenal to know that, that our leaders have such a solid working relationship with one another. And I, I know that you're going to fit in beautifully on, on the cabinet team. Look forward to working with you even more closely as a, as a board cabinet team together. So congratulations. We are excited to see you take on the new role.
Any other comments or questions from superintendent or the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Acosta for the appointment of the Director of Secondary Programs and District Services. Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. Congratulations. Seems like not too long ago, we saw you, just a few years ago, coming into Churchill. Yes, exactly.
Yeah, it was about five years ago. I had a one-year-old on my lap or a three-year-old. I can't remember which one it was. Now they're all running around everywhere. But to make one thing clear, I was JV girls basketball for four years, varsity for two weeks, and that's okay, as I stepped into the Assistant Principal role. But first, thank you, President Burton and the board for the opportunity. I am looking forward to stepping into this role. Shoes I will not be able to fill for Mr. Willenborg, his tutelage and guidance and mentorship for me, I'll hold dear as I move forward and learn, and learn those ropes and make it my position as well. So I appreciate that. To Superintendent O'Quinn for the kind words, support, guidance, and everything you brought to my educational career, both professionally and personally. I'm grateful for that and debt to that, and I look forward to that continued relationship and everything that comes with that. To the cabinet that I've known for many years, one way or another, I'm ready to jump into it, get after it, and, and be your beacon and partner and collaborator and everything else that goes along with this role. I'm, I'm really excited for that opportunity and to step into that. So thank you very much from that standpoint. To my wife Stacy and my family, my mom who wants to be here but is watching, she's home with the kids right now, while two others are off and doing, while they're off doing their sports and everything from there, but I can, I wouldn't be here without, without their support. I'm kind of in wow right now in terms of all the successes of our student athletes and our students and what I just saw that first hour or so. And I look at just the Franklin teams alone. I know my dad, who coached there and taught there for years, softball, would just be so proud of what was accomplished by our Franklin players. So from that standpoint, that's what it's all about, is our students. And I look forward to broadening that scope, looking through a telescopic lens, and bringing those talents to all the schools and all the programs within LPS. And I remember about 10 years ago, I got a gift from somebody that found my dad's letter of interest to become a teacher at Livonia Public Schools back 50-plus years ago. And I have it framed sitting on my shelf. And the one thing I'll just end right here is, as simple as it is, he says at the very end, "If I cannot help a student, may I never hurt that student and find a way for that person to be successful." So that's what I look to do in this role, and I'm excited for it. So thank you very much.
Congratulations. Our next item on our agenda is item six B, Appointment Coordinator of Student Services.
I just wanted to take a moment and thank those in the audience who came to support Mr. E. Two's. No, 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 we, many members of our Churchill team, administrative team members, ALT colleagues. So thank you so much for being here to celebrate our students earlier this evening. I know you share the pride that we do, and certainly to welcome Kevin to this role. So you all played a very important role in the work that we do each and every day, so we want to thank you.
Absolutely. And we're not done yet. The next item on our agenda is item six B, Appointment Coordinator of Student Services. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public School School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Laura Boca as the Coordinator of Student Services, effective July 1, 2022.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, and I believe we'll be hearing from Mrs. Keats on this item.
You will be. Good evening, everyone. I have the distinct pleasure of recommending Mrs. Laura Boca to the board for appointment as the Coordinator of Student Services. So Laura is no stranger to the district, as she has been here for 30 years, the last 10 of which she has been the principal at Webster Elementary School. So some things you may not know about Laura is she's a graduate of Central, where she received her Bachelor of Science in Special Education, and she has advanced degrees from Wayne State, where she earned a Master of Science in Educational Administration and an Ed Specialist in Special Education Administration. She started here in 1992 as a center teacher. She was a team leader. She then took on the roles of teacher consultant and program specialist before she was named the principal at Webster. Many of us know that she has led Webster to great things over the last 10 years, most notably, they were named a Blue Ribbon School in 2020, certainly a distinction that she and all of the Webster Wildcats are so very proud of. Laura is a Galileo leader and an impactful member of the LEEDs Executive Board, where she earned the LEEDs Distinguished Service Award in 2017. Throughout her career, she has been a strong advocate for students with special needs, and she is thrilled to be going back to the Student Services Team, where she will fulfill the next part of her career. So I am. So I am very excited to bring Laura's name as the next Student Services Coordinator.
Laura unfortunately is not able to be with us tonight, but we did not want to wait on getting this appointment taken care of, so we are celebrating her in her absence. Are there comments or questions from our Superintendent or our board members? Mrs. Oquist?
Mrs. Bradford?
Nope, Mrs. Bradford, okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to congratulate Laura. I worked with her several years when I used to be over at Webster, and I did the A-CAT testing. And she was such a great leader and principal over at Webster. I know she'll do a great job in her new role, and just really excited for her to be able to come on board and be a part of the Student Services. So congratulations to Laura.
Absolutely.
Yes, and I want to just echo Mrs. Keats's recommendation and share that we are, I know the elementary principal team will feel her loss, but certainly that will be the gain of the Student Services Leadership Team, and we know that she will continue to be a tremendous advocate for the students we serve in this new role. So while her Webster Wildcats will miss her tremendously, we know that, we are eager to have her get started in this new role for this coming school year.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? All righty. Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the appointment of Coordinator of Student Services. Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. So congratulations to Mrs. Boca. Moving along, we have Teachers for Approval, Item 6C, Teachers for Approval. And may I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Moved at the Board of Education of the Livonia Public School School District, accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and offer employment for the 2021 school year to the teachers listed on the attached document.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by, I'm sorry, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Lot of motions tonight. Let's see here. And I believe we'll be hearing from Mr. Abate and Mrs. Keats on this item.
Yes, that's correct. If I could break protocol for 10 seconds, I just want to congratulate Mrs. Boca and Mr. E2. Mr. E2 and I were approved as Assistant Principals on the same night in August in 2011. And so it's just, it's a thrill to have him sitting up here next to me coming up.
That's exciting.
We're also bringing on some teachers, and I'm going to tell you all about them. So the prospective new staff members we are presenting to the board this evening have been selected to fill our needs in the areas of elementary education, special education, psychology, and social work. They are all well-qualified to fill their respective positions, and they have been fully vetted through our extensive interview process. We're confident they will perform at a high level and represent Livonia Public Schools in a manner that is consistent with our shared vision and collective equipments. These positions have also been included in our 2122 budget. We are pleased to be recommending these talented individuals to join our LPS family, and with your approval, we are excited to have them working with our students.
Terrific. Do we have any comments or questions for board members before we take official vote on this next item? All righty. Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bradford. And Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. So congratulations to our newest members of our Livonia Public Schools Team. The next item on our agenda is Item 6D, Teachers for Tenure. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Moved at the Board of Education of the Livonia Public School School District, accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and acknowledge that tenure status has been granted to the following teachers effective on their respective dates. Teresa McColsky, March 2, 2022. Kimberly Zarzicki, April 13, 2022.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. We will hear from Mr. Abate and Mrs. Keats on this item.
Good evening again. Our Teachers for Tenure on this agenda have successfully completed the district's requirements for probationary teachers, including years of service, evaluations, overall performance, and documentation of student growth. We have carefully reviewed all supporting materials, along with the recommendations of our building administration, and have determined that these educators should be granted tenure status with Livonia Public Schools. We wish to congratulate these staff members for reaching this milestone and look forward to their continued success working in LPS.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from our Superintendent or board members on this item? We do wish to congratulate these folks. This is an enormous milestone in their career, so it's very exciting. We have a motion for Teachers for Tenure, a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. Congratulations again to our two tenured teachers and our team. The next item on our agenda is Item 6E, Leave of Absence. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Acosta?
Moved at the Board of Education of the Livonia Public School School District, accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and approve the request for a leave of absence as listed below. April Houlihan, date effective April 6, 2022.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And I believe we will hear from Mr. Abate on this item.
Yes, thank you. So yes, the staff member listed in your documentation is requesting leave the remainder of the school year. The request is being made in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement for this staff member, and we ask that you please consider approval of the leave.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the Superintendent or board members? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for a leave of absence. Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 6F, Resignations. That is just for board information, it is not necessary to have a vote. The next item is 6I, my bittersweet moment. I'm sorry, 6G rather, retirements. May we have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bradford?
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public School School District, adopt the attached Resolutions of Appreciation for services rendered by Annie Akares, Deborah Bartnik, Jennifer Cutler, Linda Carley, Lee Dresser, Mark Haig, Lorraine Hyman, Sandra Jope, Robert Kacharsky, Mary La Croix, Janice Leach, Robert Scott Shaw, Daniel Willenborg, Lori Wozniak.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Johnson, and we will hear from Mrs. Keats on this item.
Hello again. Tonight, we honor and congratulate 15 members of our LPS family who are retiring at the end of the year, no worries. As these staff members leave the district, they take with them a combined total of 400-plus years of experience. On behalf of the administration, I would like to thank these wonderful staff members for the dedicated years of service they have provided the students of Livonia Public Schools, and we ask the board to please adopt the attached Resolutions of Appreciation for our retirees.
As we've said, this is always a bittersweet. We're so thrilled and so happy for the folks who are on this list, and yet we are so sad for ourselves because these shoes cannot be filled. New folks will come on board, we will celebrate, we will be excited, and they'll make the positions their own. But the specific marks that these individuals have made on our students can't be replicated. Don't start or I'll go again. I know. Oh, shoot. Don't look at me anything. I already had my teary moment for the night. Specifically, there are always individuals on this list, we have 2,000 employees in our district, there are always individuals on this list that we don't know personally. There are always some that we do, and those are the ones that make it really difficult. We've said more than once, many, many times, if we just vote no, can we just keep you guys? And that never worked. Specifically, Dan Willenborg, 17 years as Franklin's principal, a number of years now on our Cabinet, working in our Board and Cabinet Team. Dan, you have made a mark on not only the students, but the administrative team in Livonia Public Schools. So many of our administrators have looked to you for guidance on how to be a wise leader. You have left a mark like none other in our district. One of the hardest things to do to bring you over to the Cabinet was pulling you away from Franklin. There was audible mourning going on over there. They were not happy with us. But the mark that you've left, like I said, not only on students, but teaching other administrators how to be phenomenal administrators, is the legacy I believe that you will leave in this district. Annie Akares, who is not with us tonight, is an Assistant Principal at Stevenson. Annie has been a calm presence at Stevenson for, I guess, as far back as my kids were there. She has had such a wonderful influence over so many students. I've said for a long time, I think our Assistant Principals have one of the toughest jobs in the district because they're dealing, a lot of the time, with some of the things that don't go exactly as planned, either on paper or with an individual student who might need some extra one-on-one. But these people deserve an extra thank you for working on that administrative team, but to a certain degree behind the scenes, too, to make sure that everything is just running smoothly. Annie will be so very missed at Stevenson. And our phenomenal athletic trio of Mark Haig, Lori Hyman, and Ron Hammy. I have, I told Andrea this afternoon, I keep getting people in the community who are saying, what do you mean all of our ADs are going to be retiring? And it certainly isn't, I know it's not by design that they're all stepping into their new roles in life simultaneously. I'm so glad to know that you folks are going to be staying around to help the new folks transition. Athletic directors have a very unique place in our students' lives. You touch more than half the student body that come through the athletic program, and for so many of these kids, that's what keeps them in school. That's what keeps them coming to school every day. It's more than something to do after. It's their lifeblood. We have all been to school districts where we have seen it done not as well as you have done it, and we see that in the student stands. I'm so proud to say, at Livonia, people will be people and teens will be teens, but when those little moments happen, all it needs to happen is one of our three ADs to just look and point, and it stops. That's because you've earned the respect of that student body and the populations of all three of your high schools that you are the athletic directors of. You have developed invaluable relationships with your coaches. You folks have, all three of you have hired terrific people to coach our kids. You are a point person. For the athletes in our schools, you are the administrator that they look to. And we will hire phenomenal people, they will come in, they will make it their own, but it will never be the same as how each one of the three of you ran those buildings. And you've been each in your buildings for so long that you have really made, you've made that athletic department in each one of the three buildings, Franklin, Churchill, and Stevenson, exactly what it is today. To say you're missed, you will be missed, is a gross understatement. We are so thrilled to see you on your next endeavor. We're so glad that you're going to stay around in our communities, and we are so thankful from the bottom of our hearts to all of the individuals on this list, and especially those in our administrative team who we've personally had the opportunity to work with for all that you've given to the students and the staff and the families of Livonia Public Schools. So thank you.
Are there any other comments from our Superintendent, from our board members? Dan?
So there are so many people on this list that are going to be meaningful losses to our district, so many recognizable names. But we work so closely with Dan that I can't take, I can't pass up the opportunity to say how much I will miss having him here. A couple of months ago, Dan paid me a compliment, and it made me feel like a million bucks because there is no one who has stronger character than Dan Willenborg. There is no one that's more admired in our community. So I really, really appreciate everything that he's done for our district. And it's sad to see him go, but I know we all wish him luck in retirement, and, you know, thank you for everything, Dan.
Comments from Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. It's sort of hard to follow up on those statements, but Dan, if you ever want to become a speech writer, let me know because you're going to be the first guy I look to. And I think what Dan said is, your integrity is beyond reproach, and we appreciate everything that you have done for the district. It was a coup for us to get you out of Franklin. I know how hard that was for you to move from there because you had such a following in that student body. And we were just so fortunate to have you come over, and we just wish you the best of luck in whatever you do. We appreciate it. Thank you. You're right, you look at this list, and there's so many people on here that it's hard to lose. And I look at our three athletic directors. You've done wonderful things for the athletic department, and I've gotten to know each one of you on a personal level. And I find that beyond what you did for our students, you are all tremendous human beings. We appreciate that. And we know that you leave behind a legacy, and you're not going anywhere, we know where you live. So congratulations, best of luck, and hopefully we can play some golf together.
You know, I will say there are, you know, individuals we've recognized on this list, and there are some we have not mentioned by name. And, you know, across this list, we see, you know, educators, we see student services staff, secretary, counselor, administrators, and certainly, you know, just one of our beloved Cabinet Team. And, you know, and it strikes me, it struck me as we were returning from break, that it always comes back to being about the people, about the relationships that we have with one another, the relationships that they've made, all of these people, with the students that they serve. They've given of their hearts. We have people on here who may have 20-some years, all the way up to, you know, almost 40 years in Livonia Public Schools. That is tremendous, and we have been so, so very fortunate. I have been blessed to work directly with a number of these people. I know we'll have an opportunity to talk more about our wonderful Cabinet colleague, Dan Willenborg, and the impact that he's made on so many students, so many families in this district, so many leaders in this district. But I will tell you, the impact that he has had on me as a leader, he is just the person of the highest integrity, the highest character, and you will not find someone who will be a stronger advocate for the children that we serve. There's so many little and big ways that he has made a difference over the years, and is just a truly valued voice on our team. And certainly, I will echo the statements you've shared about our wonderful athletic directors. I have always said I'm so proud to watch our student athletes out there in our, not just our student and not just our student athletes, but our fans. Because I know that they're going to be proudly cheering on our teams, but doing so in a respectful way, doing so in a way that represents not only their school, but our district so well. That doesn't happen by happenstance. That happens because we have people that work very, very hard at that. So, for each of the educators on this list, again, secretary on this list, counselor on this list, administrators and cabinet members, we are losing a vast amount of experience and care. But it truly makes us who we are in Livonia Public Schools. We are so proud to have had each of them.
Any other comments from board members? Well, it is with sadness that I ask that we have a vote on this item. Item G is retirements. We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Johnson. And Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the roll?
Do I have to?
You do, unfortunately. They're going to go even if we don't.
You're right. Well, I say yes. Mr. Johnson?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
President Burton?
And I will vote yes on the approval of the resolutions. And with sadness, we wish you well on your retirement. Yes. Congratulations. We do have a few other business matters to take care of this evening that are less fun. Item 7A, approval to purchase LMC furniture 2021 bond. May I have a motion, please?
Make it fun!
Let off for a minute.
It's fun furniture. It's really good.
I thought we were hiring more people first or something. Sorry.
Thank you for being with us this evening, folks.
Thanks for being here.
Approval to purchase LMC furniture 2021 bond. May I have a motion, please? It's okay. Anybody can jump in.
President Burton?
Yes, Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the Phase 1 purchase of furniture for library media centers at Coolidge Elementary, Kennedy Elementary, Randolph Elementary, Cooper Upper Elementary, and Emerson Middle School from NBS Commercial Interiors Troy, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $1,012,394.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. And we will hear from Mr. Francis on this item.
Thank you, President Burton. As discussed at the Committee of the Whole, this is the remainder and the majority of the purchase for the renovated buildings, LMCs. This is going to be something that is made up with in all five buildings and those media centers. The bookshelves, the soft seating, chairs, tables, et cetera, et cetera. The quotes are extensive. There's many different items in there. But essentially, all very similar, familiar, mobile-type items, wheels, flip tables, items that can be moved around. That was really the thrust of the 2021 bond initiative in the LMCs. And we discussed this at length, both at a study session and at the Committee of the Whole. Something that we discussed at the Committee of the Whole was the not-to-exceed amount. And we were hoping to be able to kind of whittle that down to the final items with timing as such, and the spring break for LPS that just occurred last week. We weren't quite there. So, we still do have the not-to-exceed amount, as discussed again at the Committee of the Whole. We've already started, you know, choosing chairs, et cetera, that are lower cost. This amount was the highest numbers that NBS had on different choices for the district. And as we start to make those choices, the costs are coming down. But that's what's meant by the not-to-exceed number. Just so the folks at home, I know the board understands because we had a pretty detailed conversation, but just so folks at home can understand that. And again, this is going to be coming from the 2021 bond fund.
And with many of these purchases, as in any industry that you're in, we're cognizant of the supply chain situation. So, as soon as we can get approvals from the Board of Education, and that will allow our district to go forward and get some of these orders placed, we are happy to do so. Are there comments or questions from the superintendent or board members on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers, for approval to purchase LMC furniture from the 2021 bond. Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 7B, approval of move management from the 2021 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the Phase 1 move. I did? Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation of the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the...
That's what mine says, too.
Hers does not.
Here, there you go.
Oh, I may be looking at the wrong one.
Okay, I'll try it again.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I do that to you all the time. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the Phase 1 move management services bid from DMS Moving Systems Canton, Michigan, in the amount of $100,215, which includes a $20,000 contingency and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts with the recommended contractor.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mr. Francis?
Thank you again. DMS Moving Systems was the low-responsible bidder for this move management item. DMS is familiar with LPS. We've worked with them before. LPS is familiar with DMS. And we have been satisfied with their work in the past. The $100,215 amount, it really is more like, we get a bundle of hours, and then we can direct them to work as needed. The majority of this work, it won't be only in our LMCs, but I think a big majority of this work will be the move out and move back in at our LMCs. But again, also for other items, we'll have some offices and some different spaces in the five buildings that will have work done. And they will be able to assist with those items as we direct them as well.
Are there comments or questions from the superintendent or board members on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the approval of move management from the 2021 bond. Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 7C, approval of project number one rebids, 2021 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from its owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, and its construction manager, Clark Construction Company, to approve the contractors identified in the construction project budgets for bid package number 2A, project number 1, rebids for 2022 renovations at Coolidge Elementary, Kennedy Elementary, Randolph Elementary, Cooper Upper Elementary, and Emerson Middle School in the total amount of $1,00,016,300, which includes costs for hard construction, fees, and contingency, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education with the awarded contractors.
Support.
Just to notify the board, I will be abstaining from this vote because I am not certain whether or not a member of my family's company may have bid to any of the contractors who are listed on this document. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And we'll hear from Mr. Francis on this item.
Thank you again, President Burton. These contractors, who we are recommending to you, are the low-responsible bidders in each of their categories. This is for summer 2022 bond projects. They'll provide some different work in areas of concrete, toilet partitions, lockers, and window coverings. And these were just a few items that we needed to rebid from our larger bid pack originally, either because there wasn't enough bid coverage or similar type reasons. And these are all planned projects out of 2021 bond fund, again, relating to the five buildings we've been discussing, as well as buildings that are AC-only work potentially. Okay? And again, we do recommend them to you.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions? This is, again, we're into a series right now of items that we've discussed rather in great detail over our previous few meetings, which is why you're probably going to hear far fewer comments than you would like to. If you are interested in much more detail, and there is a lot of detail on these items, I encourage you to listen to the Committee of the Whole meeting from two weeks ago, which is available on our website. Are there any other comments or questions from the superintendent or board on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion for approval of project number 1 rebids, 2021 bond. Motion by Mr. Centers, approved or supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bradford, would you take the roll?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
President Burton?
Abstain. And that motion passes. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7D, approval to purchase mobile devices for classrooms. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of mobile devices and charging carts from Presidio Networked Solutions Group, Wixom, Michigan, in the amount of $873,776.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Acosta. And we will hear from Mr. Francis on this.
Thank you again. This is a purchase that's going to be replacing Chromebooks that were previously purchased from bond funds in 2018, from the 2013 bond. And they will no longer be supported by Google in 2022. We've had these conversations in the past on Chromebooks and how Google has a specific number of years that they support them. They may run longer, but we always have a replacement cycle in mind to make sure that we have updated Chromebooks for our students. The pricing for these came from the state of Michigan's REMC Save Bid Project, which satisfies the board's bid requirements. And these will be paid for through Esser Grant Funds. And that's an item that Mrs. Smith to my left here has discussed with the board at the previous Committee of the Whole as well.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Acosta, for approval to purchase mobile devices for classrooms. Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 7E, approval to purchase mobile devices from ECF Grant. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Acosta?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of mobile devices from All Covered Lion Township, Michigan, in the amount of $3,192,000.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mr. Centers. And we'll hear from Mr. Francis.
Thank you again. So, this purchase is for mobile devices. They are going to be Chromebooks. And they're for student home use. It is 100% funded through what's called the Emergency Connectivity Fund. You may see it as ECF sometimes for short. And it's a grant, it's a competitive grant for remote learning. And the district, the ECF is a competitive grant, as I mentioned. And the district had applied for it. Our IT department had put together the application, did the research, and was granted the grant funds. And the pricing for these mobile devices actually are competitively bid by E-Rate. E-Rate is something that's familiar with the board, where we have them approve different purchases, as well as there are refunds at times available. So, you're probably familiar with E-Rate. And what's called the Universal Services Administration Company. That's related, it's a federal agency related to the FCC, I do believe. And it satisfies the board's bid requirement because it was run through the E-Rate bid competitively. So, again, this is, for budget purposes, it is going to be the ECF or the Emergency Connectivity Fund, which is, again, a competitive grant that will be funding this purchase. This is separate from what we normally are getting used to in the previous item, which are mobile devices and the carts that are in our schools, in our classrooms, and our media centers. This is specific for students, home use, who have a need and may not have the connectivity at home. That was the point of this federal grant. And we will work with families to supply them with these items. The idea being that students would then have something at home. And when they come to school, we have our other items at school.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there comments or questions on this item? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment and recognize Mr. Tim Clan and the entire IT department for taking the time to write for this grant. Applying for a grant is a special kind of writing. It takes talent and time. And we appreciate the fact that they put so much of their heart into this and help support so many of our families that might otherwise not have this ability to be connected to the district.
I appreciate that, and I will pass that along. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Any other comments or questions from the superintendent or board members? Seeing none, we have a motion for approval to purchase mobile devices from ECF Grant. Motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bradford, would you take the roll, please?
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 7F, approval to purchase UPS battery replacement. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of UPS battery replacement from JEM Tech Group, Clinton Township, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed $30,895.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. And we'll hear from Mr. Francis.
Thank you. These batteries are used as backup power to our building's network devices, switches, phones, P.E. systems, et cetera, to keep the services operational during a power outage in any given building. These new UPS batteries will replace the current batteries, which are nearing their end of the optimal battery life. This isn't something that you want to wait until they completely fail because then, in case of a power failure, we have a much larger issue that our network might go down in one or more buildings. Just a quick note with regard to the not-to-exceed amount. The additional quantities are listed on the attached quote. They'll be ordered at the prices shown, but we may need additional. Just as a quick explanation, which I should have given at the Committee of the Whole, the way this was bid out to be apples-to-apples, we had to choose the quantities so that companies could then bid and say, well, for that many of that size, that many of that type. And therefore, getting the pricing locked so we could compare those bids apples-to-apples, we had to be there. As our IT department continues to look through all of our network closets in all of our buildings, the presumption is we'll need more than what was on the original quotes. So, if you look at this exact quote from Gentec, it's a lower number. But each individual UPS will be held at that individual amount. So, if we said four in the original, but we end up getting six to get two more for another building, the pricing individually wouldn't change. So, the IT department looked at it more closely and determined that $30,895 should cover everything we'll need, even though the specific quote that was in your packet is a little lower than that, just for clarification.
Thank you for that explanation. Any comments or questions from our superintendent or board? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. Just out of curiosity, Mr. Francis, what do we do with the old batteries?
They would be properly handled... They would be properly handled and recycled as needed. We don't just toss those into the trash.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion for approval to purchase UPS battery replacement. Motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bradford says yes. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. The next item on our agenda is item 7G, approval to purchase LPS merchandise. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of Livonia Public Schools merchandise from MBS Incorporated, South Lion, Michigan, for an amount not to exceed $94,850.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Francis?
Kind of swatted up.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, Mrs. Smith.
My pleasure to address this item. Thank you for the time last week, or actually, it was two weeks ago at our committee of the whole meeting to go over this item. For this purchase, the district solicited multiple quotes and did significant research to compare price, quality, and the ability to host an online ordering platform and the ability to deliver to our 30 locations across the district. The district is going with the lowest price vendor for the desired items. Smaller purchases have been made with this vendor before, and we've been very pleased with the quality and the service that they provided. We did consult with district legal counsel to confirm that securing multiple quotes fulfills our legal obligation for an order of this nature.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the purchase of LPS merchandise. Motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. The next item on our agenda is item 8, instruction matters. A and B have been taken care of through our consent agenda, so we are on to item C, approval of LCTC grant purchase. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of a Teleskid track loader from the Continental Equipment Corporation for
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford, and we will hear from Mr. Willenborg on this item.
Yes, thank you, President.
Sorry, my screen only goes down so far. I gotta move it.
Thank you. We discussed this purchase at a previous study session, and our construction trades instructor, Mr. Tim Martin, joined us at our committee of the whole meeting on March 21st. Mr. Martin described the Teleskid tractor as a valuable addition, you know, to support the work and learning of his students in his construction classes. I've often referred to it as a Bobcat-like, you know, device that can do many things. And he's very excited to put that in his inventory. And the tractor is being purchased from 61(c) grant funds, which are set aside by the state of Michigan in support of career technical education. It is not a general fund purchase, and I strongly recommend the purchase of our Teleskid tractor loader, loader tractor, Bobcat-like tractor.
Terrific. Sounds like a multi-use piece of equipment.
Yes.
Do we have any? Yes, thank you, Mr. Willenborg. And do we have any comments or questions from the superintendent or board members on this item?
Do we get to drive it?
Yeah, Mrs. Bonnefield would like to drive it. I'd like to stand far away and watch. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion for approval of the LCTC grant purchase. Motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford. And Mrs. Bradford, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Willenborg.
Thank you, President Burton.
The next item on our agenda is item 9, not hearing from board members, and 9A is approval to change meeting dates for upcoming regular board meetings. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District change the dates of two upcoming regular board meetings as follows. Move the April 25th regular meeting to May 2nd, and move the May 16th regular meeting to May 23rd.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, and Mrs. Oakwest?
Thank you, President Burton. This is a relatively minor change. We're really just shifting the meeting schedule. It more closely aligns with the schedule of our upcoming business items, as well as board member and administration teams' availability.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board members on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion for approval to change meeting dates for upcoming regular board meetings. Motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. The next item is item 9B, gift from the, from community member to Franklin Athletic Department. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the generous gift from a community member of $2,000 for the Franklin High School Athletic Department.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Johnson, and I understand we'll hear from Mrs. Jenkins on this item.
Yes, thank you, President Burton. Thinking back on one of the very, very snowy days, snow days, actually, we were out of school that day in February, the baseball team and the football teams at Franklin High School with their coaches grabbed their shovels and went all around the Franklin area, the neighborhood, cleared about 500 driveways and sidewalks all morning long, and it was quite the effort. I'm not sure how many kids were out there in total, upwards of 50, 40 to 50 kids out there. This act of kindness was covered by the local TV news, which caught the attention of many, including a resident of Farmington Hills. She was so moved by these kids' kindness that she was compelled to write a $2,000 check, a donation, for Franklin High School's athletics programs. And in the note, she said that she hopes that the check could be used for anything, anything that the programs need, and she said, including a little bit of fun. So, just very sweet. A couple of us chatted with her. She did not wish to be recognized. So as a thank you, Mr. Hammy, the athletic director at Franklin, along with the coaches and the teams, put together a really nice framed thank you note with photos and all of the kids' signatures and sent it off in the mail to her, so.
That's excellent.
Yeah, pretty special.
So many things to celebrate tonight.
Yep.
Just keeps coming.
Without question.
That is terrific. Thank you so much. Are there comments or questions from our board or superintendent on this item?
Well, thank you. It was, it was an act of kindness from our wonderful student athletes and their coaches without any expectation in return, and so to have this gift was certainly very kind-hearted and well-deserved. Thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. Johnson?
A great act of paying it forward.
Yes, absolutely. Any other comments? No. Seeing none. All right, seeing none, we have a motion for acceptance of a gift from a community member to Franklin Athletic Department. Motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bradford says yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. Mrs. Jenkins, I know this individual is asked to remain anonymous, which we will respect, but would you please, if you had the opportunity, pass on the thanks from the Board of Education to her?
Yes, yes, that's already in the works. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep.
The next item is the item 9C, first reading of board policy JD, Student Code of Conduct, removed and incorporated board, removed and incorporated board policies JCD-A, JCD-A-A, JCD-A-E, and JCD-B-A. We don't need a motion on this item at this time because it's a first reading and we will vote out the second reading, but we will welcome Mr. Willenborg, who has spent a lot of time on, policy JD, for lack of a better term, has always been known as student discipline-type policy, and it's, it has needed an overhaul, and it is enormous. So the amount of work you've undertaken, Mr. Willenborg, to really get a handle on this is very appreciated. So I'll turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, President Burton. Yes, the policy JD is certainly one of our longest policies, and I want to make reference that it is, it is viewable by our TV audience, you know, on our website, under the board portions, where they can follow and see that whole, the whole document now, over 10 pages long of policy JD. And you're right, since October of this school year, we've established a policy committee to review policy JD, and we've, you know, reviewed the state of Michigan model policy for student code of conduct. We reviewed the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals' Model Code of Conduct. We've also looked at policies from surrounding districts, as well as our own Miller Johnson recommended policy for student code of conduct. So we started with the idea, we're going to rename it JD Student Discipline to Student Code of Conduct. So that was the first change. You mentioned the others. We looked at several policies that were standalone policies, particularly student behavior and conduct, prohibited use of tobacco, electronic communication devices, and prohibited game activity. We eliminated those, we proposed to eliminate those as standalone policies and absorb them into our new policy, our new student code of conduct. And that new student code of conduct, especially during our committee meeting of several weeks ago, you know, we went through section by section, introduction section, a section of that lists all the prohibitive acts, a section that lists the due process for suspensions of 10 days or less, and another section for due process and disciplinary hearing procedures for suspensions of more than 10 days. You know, this policy has been field-tested. It's been out with our, you know, current assistance to review and use and see if something's missing, or if, what we liked about the old policy stills there, and what we wanted to change is, in fact, has in fact been changed. So it's been field-tested for the past three months. We feel very, very comfortable moving forward with this attorney-approved. We work very closely with our, with Mr. Johnson and our, and our district attorney to review the policy. So we feel very comfortable that, you know, things are stated correctly and everything is covered appropriately.
Sounds great. Thank you. Are there comments or questions from the superintendent or board members on this very important item? Mrs. Oakwest?
President Burton, I know you often mention this, but I think it is important to note because this is so comprehensive, and it's rare that we would eliminate four policies. And so again, as Mr. Willenborg shared, the meat of those policies have been incorporated into this new student code of conduct, but we also, at our study session, spent a good hour with the board, and Mr. Willenborg had the copies side-by-side of our prior policy and our current policy, and really talked about each of these pieces of the policy in action. So I certainly want to share that we have spent a considerable amount of time, both with our cabinet team, with the administrative team, with whom Mr. Willenborg has worked over the past several months, as well as our policy committee. So we appreciate the extensive efforts. This has been a policy that we have long had an asterisk by, that we wanted to update, and I appreciate his shopping this through. Thank you.
Talk about tackling a big one right before you retire.
This one, this one was a significant.
Yeah.
No correlation.
Comments from other board members on this item? No. Seriously, thank you, Mr. Willenborg. This is, this was an enormous policy, and the vast majority did, the nuts and bolts of it did not change, but there was a significant need for updating of language, a significant need of making sure that legal references were correct, because things do legally change over time, and making sure that it was consistent with, with our practices, and that if these were our practices, should they still be, and if so, we needed to make sure that was reflected in policy at times. So while the gist of it did not change, how it presents is significantly updated. It was mentioned that it is on our website. If you'd like to see the one that we're looking at, that we are, that we will be putting, making an official vote on next month at this time, you can find it on our website. If you go to livonypublicschools.org, if you hover over the board tab and drop down to board meeting information, look at today's date, and you can open up our board packet. Look very near the end, item 9C, we'll give you this 10 pages as they are proposed and as they have been put forth for the board for approval. We will be voting on this next month, because board policy changes do require a first and second reading before they're voted upon. Any other comments? Again, thank you very much, and to the entire administrative team who has contributed to this policy, and our principals in our buildings who have, who have looked at it extensively and basically run it through the practice sessions and made sure that we were all covered. We appreciate having this very important policy updated.
Right, and I'd like to just call their names out once, once more.
Go right ahead.
Lindsey Rousseau, Brian Jenkins, Deb Dykstra, Nicole Hunter, Tara Woodruff, and Eric Stromberg, served on that committee and spent numerous hours engaged in discussion and review of this policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will put this, Mrs. Bradford, can you please put this on the agenda for a vote next month at the general meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 9D, second reading of board policy EDDB, Student Transportation Walkers and Riders. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Acosta?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for Board Policy EDDB, Student Transportation Walkers and Riders.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mrs. Bradford, and we'll hear from Mr. Francis.
Thank you, President Burton. This is the second reading, as mentioned, and the EDDB, Student Transportation Walkers and Riders, is actually quite a brief policy, and there is just a very small addition to clarify originally. And there was a secondary portion that was really about student bus passes. It was not policy. It was really more procedure and processes, so we removed that. Just to give the official second reading, and it is short, I'll just read through it for the board quickly, and if there's any questions or comments, we can do that. EDDB, Business Management Student Transportation Walkers and Riders. Bus transportation is a privilege and not a right, and shall be administered in accordance with law. Eligibility for transportation is based on a student's home address. Bus pickup and drop-off is to and from the bus stop assigned based upon the student's home address unless otherwise determined by a student's Individualized Education Program, IEP. Transportation shall be provided for secondary students living more than one and one-half miles from the school of designated attendance, and elementary students living more than one mile from their school of designated attendance. Exceptions may be made for safety and health reasons of students.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions by the superintendent or board members? And again, lest anyone have a misunderstanding, this does not change our current practice.
Correct.
This just puts a little bit more definitive terminology into that, lest there be any misunderstanding.
Correct.
Okay.
It's a clarification for specifically bus stops in the neighborhood of eligible, of eligible students.
Sounds good. And the bus student passes, that is not removed from existence within Lavonia Public Schools. It is rather just put into a more appropriate place, such as a student handbook, because it really is not policy.
Correct.
So, again, it's not, the bus student, the bus passes are not gone, it's just that the terminology is found in a different location.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for second reading of board policy E D D B, student transportation walkers and riders. Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes, Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. The next item on our agenda is nine E, second reading of board policies G A M, staff rights and responsibilities, G B E, conflict of interest, formerly B H A dash two, and G B L, professional personnel, comma, tenure. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for personnel policies, G A M, staff rights and responsibilities, G B E, conflict of interest, formerly B H A dash two, and G B L, professional personnel tenure.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, and Mr. Abate.
Yes, thank you. So, things remain identical to what you've seen in the first reading. For G A M and G B L in particular, it's really just some basic cleanup and updating, professional personnel, the tenure piece of it now matches exactly what, you know, we actually do, which is important. And then, of course, the conflict of interest piece, I think reclassifying it as a, as a personnel item in, you know, in the policy manual made some sense. And, and again, it was reflective of what are, of how we typically handle business in personnel here in the district, and I think it's, it hits all the points that we'd, we'd like it to.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the superintendent or board members on these three policies? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for second reading of board policies G A M, staff rights and responsibilities, G B E, conflict of interest, formerly B H A dash two, and G B L, professional personnel tenure. Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes, Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes, and that motion passes. The next item on our agenda is item nine F, approval of sympathy resolution for the family of Silas Kurtz, Riley Upper Elementary, sixth grader. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached sympathy resolution for the family of Silas Kurtz.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bradford, and I will turn it over to you, Mr. Green.
Good evening, President Burton.
Good evening.
Tonight's been an emotional meeting. We've had some lows, but many highs. I hope all of our lives can be like that, but this is a sad time. Before I read the resolution, I'd hope I could say a few words about Silas. As mentioned, Silas was a student at Riley Upper Elementary. It's much more than that. I didn't know Silas personally. My wife had the opportunity to work with Silas every day at Riley. And at the loss of a child, there's really no words or resolutions that can express how sad that is for the family and, and for the Riley community. But lessons that Silas taught us, he did teach us some things, and his life mattered. And Silas taught us spirit, humor, grit. We talk about grit, right? We talk about it all the time. Nobody showed more grit than Silas. Coming back this fall, being pretty sick, needing a lot of help, but he taught a lot of lessons to his classmates. They're going to have those lessons for the rest of their life. They're going to grow up and they're going to talk about Silas, and, and those things are part of Silas's legacy, legacy, excuse me. Silas is funny. Ms. Ellison, his fifth grade teacher, told a story that last year Silas was asking her at spring break, "What are you doing, Ms. Ellison? Are you going anywhere?" And she said, "Yes, I'm going to Florida." He's like, "So am I." And she's like, "When, when are you leaving, Ms. Ellison?" And she said, "Like, Friday, I think." He goes, "So am I. What, uh, what time you leaving?" "I think about six o'clock is our flight." "So is mine. What flight are you on? Delta something, something, something," or spirit, I don't want to give anybody a plug here, "but so is mine." And they were on the same flight together, and Silas was funny, and, and that moment happened for a reason. And Ms. Daly spoke, his teacher this year, of how, you know, her students experienced Silas's illness at the beginning of the year, and how he persevered, and how he was part of that journey with them and they were with him. Our wonderful student services department met with those students back in March and supported them, just like we heard about earlier this evening. So, you know, those, those are some of the pieces to Silas, but we've all been impacted by loss, especially this kind of loss, it's the worst kind of loss. And an old friend of mine taught me many years ago, when he lost his son at a young age, he thanked me when I saw him at Costco and mentioned his son, and he said, "Thank you." Most people don't want to talk about it, but when you lose a child, you want them to talk about their child. So, I hope the Riley community, the LPS community, whenever they run into Silas's family, continue to mention Silas. He has a younger sibling, a much younger sibling, who was just born recently, and so someday will be a future LPS student, and so Silas's legacy lives on. So, I'd like to, just wanted to mention those things before I read the resolution.
Thank you.
Sympathy resolution, Silas Kurtz. Whereas the Board of Education was deeply saddened to hear of the untimely death of a special member of our school community, Silas Kurtz, on March ninth, 2022. And whereas Silas Kurtz cherished son of Dan and Christina Cobb, was a sixth grader at Riley Upper Elementary School, where he enjoyed learning and spending time with his friends, and was admired by staff and students. And whereas Silas will be remembered with great fondness by his family, friends, and many others who knew him. And whereas Silas epitomized true strength, determination, and a dominant spirit throughout his short life, and despite his recent illness, and whereas Silas Kurtz enjoyed hanging out with his friends, riding his bike, and playing guitar and piano while he was able to do so, and was grateful to be surrounded by his family and their love. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District offers its heartfelt sympathy to the family and friends of Silas Kurtz for their great loss of their beloved son, brother, and friend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Are there comments or questions from our board members or our superintendent? I, Mrs. Oakley, go ahead.
Well, certainly, I'll just really, I thank Mr. Green for sharing those special memories of Silas, and we want his family to know, his teachers and his classmates, that they are in our hearts and will remain in our prayers.
Any other comments? I appreciate, Mr. Green, your, your reminder to all of us to continue to mention Silas, and apply that same thought to anyone who's lost a family member. Even if that individual is elderly, it's still, it's, it's not like not mentioning them will make the pain go away. They're thinking about it anyway. But mentioning their name and remembering those stories, even if it's just brief, it helps the person who's grieving to know that other people still love and care for their individual. So, thank you very much. The sympathies of all of the Board of Education, and I'm certainly, I'm certain all of those in Lavonia Public Schools who knew and cared for Silas extends to his family at this time. Item, we will be voting on item nine F, approval of the sympathy resolution. Approval of the sympathy resolution for the family of Silas Kurtz, Riley Upper Elementary, sixth grader. Mrs., the motion was by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bradford, and Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis, yes. Mrs. Bradford says yes. Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes. And that motion passes. And again, our, our love and our prayers and our thoughts are with the Kurtz family. Next item on our agenda is nine G, approval of a sympathy resolution for the family of Sheri Lynn Nadon, second grade teacher at Rosedale Elementary School. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached sympathy resolution for the family of Sheri Lynn Nadon, teacher at Rosedale Elementary School.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Abate?
Yes, thank you. I'll just, my sympathy as well to Sadis's family, before I read this, I have a son headed for sixth grade, and I can't fathom, can't fathom it. And there's, there's, there's no words to, to offer families to, to, to take that pain away, but I'll tell you, if I was going to try, I would send Bill Green. Bill Green, you're a class act, that was deeply moving. Well done, sir. For Ms. Nadon, I'm sorry that we even have to have this resolution, but I'm honored to read this for, for her and her family and for the school community she, she served and her students. Whereas the Board of Education was deeply saddened to hear of the untimely death of Sheri Lynn Nadon, and whereas Sheri Lynn was a valued, caring, and highly respected staff member in the Lavonia Public Schools School District as a second grade teacher at Rosedale Elementary School, and whereas she consistently demonstrated her outstanding dedication, care, and commitment to students, parents, and colleagues, and will be greatly missed by all, and whereas Sheri Lynn Nadon was all, will always be remembered with great fondness, and with profound sense of gratitude for the immeasurable contribution she made to our school district, to the students she served, and to the colleagues with whom she worked, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District offers its deepest sympathy to the family, friends, and colleagues of Sheri Lynn Nadon.
Thank you, Mr. Abate. Are there comments or questions from our superintendent or members of our Board of Education?
Well, certainly, our, our hearts go out to Sheri Lynn's husband, Tim, and her two beautiful daughters. We know she is, she has been surrounded by colleagues who just cherish their time with her, and we know that the Rosedale community, the Johnson community, of whom she was a part for a number of years, and I believe previously Roosevelt as well, she touched literally hundreds and hundreds of lives throughout her time in Lavonia Public Schools, and is gone far too soon and far too suddenly. Our, our hearts grieve with her family, both at home and at Rosedale and Johnson, and we thank everyone who has reached out to share their memories, their warm memories, and their love for her. So, our prayers remain with, with her family.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakley. Are there comments from other members of the Board of Education? And I echo Mrs. Oakley's comments, and specifically in addition to her family, pray for her second graders, because they're having to experience something that is not something that second graders should have to go through. It was certainly unexpected and an enormous loss to her family, her friends, and her, her coworkers, and her very little students. We have a sympathy resolution, approval of the sympathy resolution for the family of Sheri Lynn Nadon, teacher at Rosedale Elementary School, motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. And Mrs. Bradford, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford says yes. President Burton?
Yes, and the motion passes. Sadly, as we mentioned earlier in the meeting, we also lost a dear LPS colleague, Mrs. Melody Provinter, suddenly and unexpectedly over our spring break. Melody was a recently retired Lavonia Public Schools teacher of over thirty years, and she's back and, and subbing in Johnson. She was one of our, our long-term mainstays. Most folks didn't even realize she had retired, because she was right back working with our students, and working with our, our Lavonia Public Schools Education Foundation. Are there comments that folk, that, I know our board, some of our board members wish to speak to, to Melody's passing, and our superintendent? Are there comments or questions from our board superintendent, Mrs. Bradford?
Thank you. I knew Melody many years ago, working at Riley at the PTA, and she was one of those people that would just step in, no matter where you were needed, she would be there with a cheerful heart and just willing to help. And the one story I remember is I was helping run the PTA there, and at the time, we were looking for parents to take our spots as we moved on to homes, and we were having a difficult time getting some parents to step up. And Melody said, "Oh, well, if there aren't any parents to step up, I most certainly will become the president of the PTA." And we're like, "Well, Melody, you're a teacher, a staff member." She says, "It doesn't matter. Wherever I'm needed, I would, I would be there." And I think she served in that role for a couple of years, and did it just wonderfully, obviously. And just knowing her, I asked a couple of my kids, "Do you remember Ms. Provinter?" "Oh, yes, they did." And, and she made such an indelible mark on, on many students, and it's just a tremendous loss for the district, and, and I just want to send my sympathies out to her daughter, Elizabeth, and her family, and just let her know that the, the district is, this is a tough loss for our district and for the LPS Foundation. So, our hearts and prayers go out, go out to her family.
Thank you. Mr. Centers?
I just wanted to share a quick story. When I heard the news, I was reflecting on the first time that I met her. I was a newly appointed board member, and just a few weeks, I believe, after I was appointed, we were doing these community forums, and she was in my group, and I, I knew very little of the district, and I remember she was just grilling me about keeping the arts, supporting the arts, making sure our programs aren't cut, you know, and I, I felt just raked over the coals. So, the next couple of times I saw her, I, you know, I was like, you know, had this reaction, like, "Oh, man, here she comes again." But I then came to realize that she is someone who's so passionate about what she did, so passionate about our schools, our community, that I didn't dread seeing her, I, I instead very much enjoyed seeing her. So, you know, I can't, she's going to be incredibly missed, and her impact on Lavonia and our school district is just immeasurable.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. Melody was such a huge part of the foundation. She was basically our secretary writing all of our, our minutes. She was so involved with the grant program over the last couple of years, spending hours and hours going over the applications, doling out the, the prizes, so to speak. She was so passionate about what she did, she loved music. Talking about the stories, I remember one of the first years on the board, they used to do the spring fling, and I think perhaps you did it, Colleen. She came to me and, in, in her way, offered very strongly to come over and be a guest conductor. I have no musical ability, and I said, "Well, I'm not sure I'm the, the one to, to do it." And she says, "Oh, no, no, you'll be fine." So, I turned to my daughter, who is a conductor, and she basically said, "Dad, forget it." I said, "Well, I'm going to do it anyway." And Melody was, she just had that way of convincing you to do things, and she is going to be sorely missed, not only with the district, but in the foundation, so, and our thoughts and prayers go out to her daughter. in the foundation. So, and our thoughts and prayers go out to her daughter.
Mrs. Oakley?
Thank you, President Burton, for the opportunity to just, to really share what truly a long-lasting impact Melody has had on our LPS community. She was an educator here, as you know, for over thirty years, and she often said that she taught at just about every single one of our schools in the district. As you know, our specials teachers are wonderful about being willing to be assigned and to learn new school communities. And as busy as she was during her time as a teacher, as a music teacher, as a teacher leader for many years, really setting the standard within our district, she was possibly busier in retirement. She was not only an integral part of our LPS Education Foundation Board overseeing the Grant Committee, the Champions Program, which is really a significant fundraising effort that she worked on with colleagues in the district. She also very graciously accepted our pleas to help. This year, we had a need at Johnson Upper Elementary to cover music classes from eleven to one each day, in the middle of the day for two hours, which is not an easy assignment to fill. And boy, did she come in and bring energy and her enthusiasm and her passion to the program, took on those students in that program just as her own. And while she could have been easily enjoying her retirement, she was back in the classroom, making an impact. And last week, or the week prior to break, when we had the string fling, she did not want to miss out on seeing her students perform. And even though she was in the hospital, her wonderful daughter, Elizabeth, who is a valued member of our transportation team and is someone I have known since she was a young girl, was there with her mom on FaceTime, being able to share the performances of her students, of whom she was so proud. She sent them a wonderful note of encouragement that day, which the principals were able to share with their students. And beyond our schools, our foundation, her church, her family, there was truly no one she would not help. She will be forever remembered and missed.
Comments from any other board members? And when I, when I think of Melody, one of the first things I think about is Elizabeth. Because Melody and Elizabeth, at any of the activities that we were at, after-hours, volunteer opportunities, celebratory situations, Melody was there frequently, and the vast majority of the time, Elizabeth was with her. They had a very, very special mother-daughter bond that will carry Elizabeth, I'm sure, carry with Elizabeth through her whole life. Many of us expressed concern when we heard of Melody's passing. After the immediate shock of that, almost everybody I know talked about Elizabeth. We are very much praying for you and keeping your mom in our thoughts, Elizabeth, and if there's anything we can do, please don't hesitate to let us know. I'm so thrilled that Elizabeth is such an integral part of our LPS team. She's one of our bus drivers in transportation, and very important in students' lives. She's learned from her mom how to impact students' lives in such a positive way. We will, we will certainly be keeping Melody and her family and Elizabeth in our prayers, and again, the students who suddenly had a teacher taken from them, who shouldn't have to go through that at that age. Again, unfortunately, in summary, we will keep the family of Silas Kurtz, Sheri Lynn Naden, and Melody Provinter in our prayers. They've all shown us a lot of the best of what we can do in schools. The last item on our agenda is this evening is hearing from board members. It has been a rather lengthy meeting with, as we've said, a lot, a lot of emotional highs and sadnesses, but are there any comments from board members that they would like to share at this time? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. This meeting has been an emotional roller coaster. We've had a lot of memories, but we've had a lot of celebrations. And I wanted to bring to everyone's attention one thing that we can celebrate that might have slipped under the radar. As you know, we had a big robotics competition here recently, held at Churchill. Many teams came and competed. It was exciting. If you've ever been to one, then you already know that. But there was certainly no shortage of excitement in Livonia's area. We brought home some blue banners and some medals, which made us very proud. But what really made me proud of our team was a little event that happened that most people weren't aware of. There was a team that came from Metro Detroit. They came to Churchill to compete with their robot. They were a very young team, having just been rookie year in 2020, and they were a special needs team. And this team was so eager to have their robot compete. And during the competition, they had some problems with their robot, some mechanical problems and some programming issues, and our kids stepped up and helped these kids, helped this other team. If you're familiar with FIRST, then you know that that's not unusual. One of the tenants of FIRST is professional cooper- cooperition, and that means that you compete against other teams, but you also compete with other teams, and you support each other. So our kids stepping up to help them with their bot is not unusual. The other team had to leave early, and they were not able to continue competing on our evening, and their robot came up and was supposed to be competing, and our kids stepped up and drove their robot so that they wouldn't be disqualified. I am so proud. Man, that means more than the medals and more than the banners. Good job, guys. You're up.
Excellent. Thank you for sharing that. Any other comments from any other board members or superintendent this evening? All right, folks. It has been a very long meeting. We thank you for joining with us with all that we have to celebrate, including the sadnesses. We will celebrate the lives of those that we've lost in LPS, and we certainly celebrate all the accomplishments of our students and our staff and our families this evening. We wish you a wonderful Easter, a wonderful spring holiday season, and we are now adjourned. Have a nice evening.